Shall we go ahead and conduct five after? Want to go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Washington County Plan Commission. First thing we have is that we have a pledge and a prayer and then we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. Do you please stand with me? Remove your hats if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy great and good name above all the earth, thou hearken, the creator of the land and sea and sky and all that is contained therein. We come before you now, Father, thanking you for this day. Thank you for our reign. Thank you for all the blessings that you showered down upon each and every one of us. This time, dear heavenly Father, we ask that you please be with the sick, please be with Ben Bowling and his current health issues, and please be with those members of our friends and our families that are under the weather. We would ask that you be with the hands that are ministering to them, restore them to a normal portion of health as it be thy will. We ask, dear heavenly Father, that you please be with our president, please be with our Congress, and please be with our leaders on the state and local level. Help them to enact laws which are in accordance with thy will and to do away with the laws which are against thy will. We ask that thy will be done in all things and not ours. I ask, dear heavenly Father, that you please guide our thoughts and guide our words throughout this meeting, that we might say what is, say and mention things that are in the best interest of our community, might glorify you and that your will might always be done. Watch over us and keep us all safe as we depart from this place, as we head to our homes. Keep us safe as we travel on the roads. Forgive us for sins and save us in the end. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Secretary, Tom Sotter, would you please conduct the vote? Wayne Freiberger, Jim Day, Scott Mottman, Shawna Humphrey, David Hor, Adam DeForre, John Michler, Danielle Walker, Jeff Satter. We have seven of the nine members present. Do we have a quorum? Okay. Minutes, have they been written?
They've been written and distributed. Unfortunately, I got them out late to everyone and I only got receipts from five of the nine members that they've been read. So, if you would like me to, we could go over them now. I don't know if some people have read them or not, but I don't know. They had five members present last time, anyway, didn't they? So, those of you who were present, if you've had an opportunity to read those or approve those, if not, I can go over them.
Lots of preference of the commission?
I say read them.
Was I reading them?
Okay.
The meeting was called to order by David Hor. These are the minutes of the September 11th meeting at seven o'clock PM. The meeting opened with the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer. Present were David Hor, John Michler, Adam DeForre, Wayne Freiberger, and Jim Day. Absent were Shawna Humphrey, Jeff Satter, Scott Mottman, and Danielle Walker. Attorney Sipers presented the board with the minutes of the August meeting. David Hor stated that the August meeting had stated that the next Plan Commission meeting would be held September 10th, but in fact, the meeting was scheduled for September 12th, June 11th, 2012, due to the fall of the Labor Day holiday. Subcommittee approved by a 5-0 motion of John Michler seconded by Jim Day. President Hor welcomed his present and offered opening remarks. The first order of business was committee reports. First subdivision control in the report was given. Second, land use. David Hor reported there had been a meeting held, but he would report on that later in this meeting. August 21st, 2012 was the last land use subcommittee meeting that was held. Issues were sent back to the committee for review as to reciprocal setbacks. Significant time spent discussing setbacks as well as the point system for land. A weighted percentage was worked with on the point system, given to a property to see how it came out on a sample property that was used. President Hor reported that there had been a land use meeting scheduled for after the evening's Plan Commission meeting. But due to Carrie Keller Steele's absence due to a family medical situation, that meeting would be postponed. At this time, Attorney Sipers then reported that there was an access to public records request received from David Norton as to the August 21st, 2012 land use meeting. The request was for several things, but related primarily to the land use subcommittee. Sipers reported that because five members of the entire Plan Commission, a considerable majority, attended that meeting, the meeting would fall under the open door law. Therefore, minutes need to be prepared and made available. Sipers also noted in the Access to Public Records Act rules for subcommittee meetings to be held. He indicated that had there not been a majority of the whole Plan Commission present, because the subcommittee was not appointed by the commission itself but by Carrie Keller Steele, it would not fall under the public, the Access to Public Records Act. However, when a majority of the commission members are in attendance at a subcommittee meeting, the open door law does come into play and it would be considered a meeting. Attorney Sipers expressed the opinion that since whatever ideas are come to in the subcommittee meetings are then presented to the commission in a regular meeting for open discussion and consideration, this should not pose a problem for members of the public who want to provide input. The purpose of the subcommittee is to expedite the preparation of proposed ordinance that will be considered in its entirety by the entire Plan Commission in an open meeting. And once revisions are made, will be presented to the Washington County Board of Commissioners and there will be a public hearing. With that said, the commission should be aware of this issue unless a majority of the public agency's membership should be present when proceeding forward with the subcommittee meeting. Regarding Mr. Norton's request for materials of Carrie Keller Steele, the Access to Public Records Act requires that requested records be identified with specificity, not just a general record request. In his written response, Attorney Sipers asked Mr. Norton to be more specific in that regard. In conclusion, the land use subcommittee will need to produce any memorandum or minutes summarizing what took place at the August 21st meeting. The memorandum cannot be approved at this time since there's not been a meeting at a subcommittee held since the August 21st meeting and the document has not been prepared and approved. Attorney Sipers noted that Mr. Norton made a list of all subcommittees, their members, and contact information. Attorney Sipers reported that there was no official list that existed and the APR, the Access to Public Records Act, does not require the preparation of documents that do not exist. However, Attorney Sipers offered to create a list to that effect in the spirit of cooperation and produce it to Mr. Norton. Mr. Norton indicated verbally that this could not be necessary. David Norton then addressed the Plan Commission. He stated his belief that the draft ordinance presented by Carrie Keller Steele on the projector at the August Plan Commission meeting would qualify in its entirety as a public record and must be produced. Attorney Sipers agreed that the draft language regarding reciprocal setbacks, which was actually presented and discussed, would be a public record subject to disclosure. However, he felt the rest of the document, which was not presented to and discussed by the entire Plan Commission in public, was not a public record subject to disclosure. Instead, he researched that further and responded accordingly. He reminded those present that once the draft ordinance was prepared, there will be multiple opportunities for the public to review it, including a public hearing held as part of the process to adopt an ordinance. David Hor stated that when Carrie Keller Steele first discussed the land use subcommittee, she thought eight members was a good starting place. She was asked by the commission to change that to 10, as attendance may fluctuate by those on the committee. He also stated that attendance at those meetings definitely fluctuated. David Hor and Adam DeForre explained to Mr. Norton that this ordinance was a work in progress and that there are sections that have not even gotten to for discussion, that they have not gotten to for discussion and that is incomplete and the draft is not ready to be given out until all sections have been decided on. David Hor began the discussion about the need to pursue the subcommittees. The commission agrees that any subcommittee should not contain a form of Plan Commission. Discussion was had about abolishing subcommittees other than the land use. Adam DeForre made a motion to abolish all other subcommittees other than the land use that had been established with John Michler seconding. Wayne Freiberger made a motion to close the discussion with Adam DeForre seconding the motion to abolish all other subcommittees other than land use was passed 5-0. John Michler, who brought a plot map of the county showing all poultry operations, there are approximately 50 existing poultry CFOs in Washington County. He predicts this year there will be even more as far as best proceeds with the Bruiser F facility. Ron Hamilton, who resides on Cox Ferry Road, discussed the building of Lake John Hay in 1968 and the taxes. People within the watershed pay to support it. He expressed disapproval that it was sold to the city of Salem. Regarding poultry operations, he further stated that he and Tony Alexander feel that they are going to depreciate their property values and he is for regulation to limit the negative impact on our breeding property owners. Don Rogers of Lockenhour Lane in Salem said that he wanted to commend John Michler on the map that was presented. He also stated that in 1992 and 1996, he served as state chairman of the Indiana Forestry and discussed the desire for a Plan Commission to rethink the subcommittee and call it something else and get input from the community. David Norton spoke, saying that he appreciated that John Michler, the Grand Fork Commissioner, openly and honestly about zoning. The first time he encountered zoning was at the University of Kentucky. He cited examples where zoning had unjustly encroached on individuals' religious freedoms in some instances. He feels that people should be allowed to do what they want as long as they don't harm anyone else. David Brown, Commissioner for the 3rd District, stated that his district has a lot of poultry development going on and is disappointed that the subcommittees were abolished and felt they are necessary for effective work being done. He feels something needs to be done quickly regarding the rapid growth of poultry operations. Members of the Plan Commission explained that the agricultural ordinance committee had not been abolished. David Hor made comments about his own operation as CFO and the need to have things in the right place, there being no further business before the commission. Jim Day made a motion to adjourn the meeting seconded by Wayne Freiberger. The motion passed 5-0.
Commission, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as read? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Wayne Freiberger has made the motion. Jeff Satter, second. It's open for discussion. Seeing that, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. I see we have a large crowd here and I want to go ahead. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the October 1st meeting of the Washington County Plan Commission. Everyone who appears before the Plan Commission is entitled to a legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone present who wants to will be given a chance to speak. We will ask that when you are called upon to speak, that you will state your name, address for the record. I see we have a significant crowd here. I will be here all night if we have everybody speak. If there's a common theme, I'd like to have maybe a common spokesman. So, as looking at this, I think that we may have a common theme here. So, I mean, is there any preference? I will allow, you know, anybody that wants to speak, but if you're going to be talking about the same issue, I'd like to have a common spokesman. We can allow some extra time. We do, limited to three minutes, you know, for, you know, for discussion on that. So, we'll be timed and get out. So, if you're wanting to speak, I guess we could go ahead and put a pad up for, you know, signatures if we want to do that or how you want to do this, Plan Commission. All right. All right. So, if you hear a common theme, you know, and it's the same thing that you're thinking about, or if you can get a common spokesman, we would appreciate it and we'll get out of here before midnight or 1:00. Okay? First order on our business before agenda. Open door complaint. Tom?
Yeah, I reported last time when we covered that in the minutes, and I assumed you meant the Access to Public Records Act.
Correct.
But tonight, as I was walking in the meeting, I got a copy of an October 1st, 2012 letter to Max Green, a member of the land use subcommittee, who apparently has made a complaint against the committee alleging a violation of the open door law in reference to the subject matter we discussed, which was at a subcommittee meeting, there was a majority of this body, five members present.
Six, six members.
Okay. More than five or more members present, which, as I said in my last, at the last meeting, if there's a majority of this body of any public agency present, it qualifies as a meeting under the Indiana open door law and falls under the requirements for a public meeting of a public agency under the Indiana open door law, which includes posted notice of the meeting 48 hours in advance and notification to the media. That didn't happen, so that's no surprise to me that that was a determination. In reading this, and again, I just got this as I was standing in the hallway, it does say that the complaint was made and it said, "Our office forwarded a copy of your formal complaint to the commission." I assume they mean the Plan Commission. As of today's date, we have yet to receive response. I have not received a copy of the formal complaint. This is the first I knew of this and an opinion's already been rendered. Has anybody received a copy?
Just as I come through the door.
No, I mean of the complaint itself. Normally, the public access counselor would forward that and I don't know, Tom, they forwarded that, so.
To Travis's, Travis's email.
I can inquire about that. At any rate, based on my quick skimming of the document, what, the conclusion is not something that I would think is something we would have contested in any way. If I had, if I had responded to the complaint, I would have said that it's our understanding that a majority of this body was present and therefore it qualifies as a meeting under the open door law. So, I don't know that there's anything to respond other than that because we've already, I provided the opinion in the last meeting that that was a meeting under the open door law, so.
Adam DeForre, I talked to him. He called and said he wasn't going to be available tonight, but what I had written there is basically part of the discussion. And that, Tom, do you have that, that motion in front of you?
Yes, and Adam had mentioned something to me about this is the...
I've got the wrong date on there.
Basically, what he's suggesting is, see, under the open door law, if you have an illegal meeting or you violate the law, we'll call it an illegal meeting, then one of the remedies is that the complaining party wants an adverse, wants an adverse determination that's made by the public access counselor, that any action taken in that meeting can be rescinded, overturned, whatever, objective relief can be granted. And so, Adam had made the suggestion, based on my opinion that that was a violation, that we rescind the events or any decisions that ostensibly would have been made, even though I don't think any decisions really are made by a subcommittee. But to the extent that's the case, that that be rescinded and then at the next subcommittee meeting, the same material be properly addressed. But basically, again, as the minutes reflected, as a discussion, when during the last public meeting of this body, the Plan Commission, everything that is discussed in the subcommittee may or may not ever become an issue for discussion by virtue of unwritten ordinance. In other words, the items that are discussed may or may not ever make their way into a proposed ordinance that ever gets considered even by this body or the Washington County Commissioners. But that was Adam's proposed course of action, which I think that's a good suggestion, that we can avoid the hassle of a lawsuit and defending and potential action of the court doing that for us. We can just rescind any formal action that was deemed to have been taken and then just take it up again in the next subcommittee. You want me to read this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and present it.
Actually, I have a, may I add something?
Yes, carry it.
It would actually be very easy to do because all my drafts are date stamped and my notes are date stamped, so it'd be very easy to know what happened before and after that meeting.
I present out a motion to the Plan Commission to rescind any action taken on the August 21st meeting of the land use committee. I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Second, Wayne Freiberger, it's open for discussion. Narrating for action of the August 15th meeting of land use from Brunswick. Basically, some phrase is facilitated by Carrie's Keller Steele. By inadvertent action, there were six Plan Commission members present. By virtue of members present, this made a quorum of members which by definition would be considered an official meeting of the Plan Commission. This motion is to clarify that no action, if any, by the land use committee on August the 21st meeting will be considered as official action of the Washington County Plan Commission. There have been provisions and discussions by the Plan Commission to limit the number of Plan Commission members that serve on this committee. Is there any more discussion?
I'd like to throw in that there needs to be a date changed, that needs to be done as part of, for the record, as part of the motion, and you said August 15th.
Yeah, I'll change it to the 21st on my verbal, so I change.
Okay. I thought I heard 15th again.
No, maybe you did. All right. So, I change it for the 21st. Any more discussion? If not, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Next order of business, land use, report in progress, Carrie Keller Steele.
Well, in line of the last vote, there's no progress, which is fine. Mostly, one of the main things we need to do is that of the next couple of meetings, thank you guys for your patience in light of, you know, our family emergency that kept me from being here at the last meeting. But what I'd like to do, and especially in light of the other, the last vote, is to have a meeting on Thursday this week and then begin the following Monday with the subcommittee. And I think between those two meetings, we can actually probably have the ag portion done, or at least as done as we can all agree for that to happen. I'll send out the email to the subcommittee to confirm those dates, but right now, we're looking at the 4th and the 8th at 7:00. I'll call Pam myself and see if you can get the room and send out the email to confirm that. There are no drafts to be distributed, so I need you all to go back to your last email, which the date at the bottom of the draft would be... I think the title of the email is actually 7/21/12A, maybe might have been the title of the email, but as long as, there's also one that's dated actually August 21st, 12, so I'm not sure if that's just the one that I printed because it automatically comes up. So, if it's, as long as it's after August 6th and there hasn't been any updates since the 21st, so that should be the draft that you look at, as well as...
Carrie, I've got one dated August 7th.
That's what I've got.
Then that's the same one, that's the one that we discussed on August 21st. That's the one that we need to discuss again.
All right.
And as well, the night of the, which would probably be the August 7th meeting, if that you're right, was there an August 7th area of playing meetings? That night, I figured out a weighted average scoring system. It had our, the way it currently scored and then it had percentages to the side, those are the two things that need to be looked at to be discussed on Thursday. It's kind of the, it's the same information, but you can check it all out again. In terms of the, there were a few handouts on the 21st and we'll just hand all those back out. There's no reason to review them because we won't have time to get to them on Thursday anyway, so I'll hand them back out again on Thursday and we'll just hold those over for Monday's discussion. That's it.
Anything else from the Plan Commission and questions, Carrie?
I do, I guess I have one quick question. Without the extra committees, do you want me just to run all of the grammar proofing, you know, that second set of I's from the board, dump out content, but about structure and things, who do I run all that through? Now, there was a committee for that, so do I just run that through Tom now?
Tom, that'll work for me.
Yeah, I mean, it's not content issues, it's just, you know, making sure that I didn't spell forum instead of farm and so I'll check what you catch up to.
Okay. You want Tom to go ahead and proofread then? Plan Commission? Okay. Do we need to make a vote on that? Go ahead and do it that way. We do everything, let's make a motion on it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, John Michler has made a motion to have Tom Sipers proofread. That's second. Danielle has made a second. It's open for discussion. Seeing that, take it to a vote. All in favor of having Tom Sipers proofread the document, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried.
It makes me very nervous and I'll have him sign in. I think you're better off, so I can sign and cheat it for you.
As they count up, we'll have him sign in.
And we'd like people to put their, I mean, this is not a public hearing, this is a public meeting, so there's no requirement, but we would like people to put their name and address.
It is for public record. Don, I missed, I did your name wrong. I did Tom.
Okay.
You know, there are Toms in here that are respectable enough, so Tom, Don, that you did ask beyond the agenda before, so at this time, if there's no any other old business, is there any other old business? Move to new business. Don Rogers is asked for to give remarks to the land use ordinances.
Thank you very much.
Please stand, state your name, address, please.
Sure. I am Don Rogers, of Salem, Indiana, father of three and husband of one. Don't really have a podium, but do have notes here that I would like to take my seat and make some table, if that's okay.
That's fine.
I have did some research myself. Of course, I've been subjected to a little of it in the past, but I have, the first thing I want to hit on is the air particulates, because that's really not discussed, it's really not recognized by the HDM. And then, maybe touch a little bit on the water pollutants that may be affecting our land, people, and animals. I don't think this really affects me directly where I live. There's not really enough land to put something there, but that may change, so therefore I am a little bit concerned about it. It's not really the building that I think people are concerned about, it's what's inside the building and what comes out of the building and then spread onto local fields for fertilizations and things like that. Before I get into this, just to, just to touch on what has happened to me before, the particulate spreading that's placed onto the fields has a lot of stench to it. placed onto the fields has a lot of stench to it. It really, you know, that's really not the main concern because I did grow up on a farm. You know, stench to me was like a breath of fresh air. But the difference between the 1970s and today, it's filled with different particulates, different elements that we're concerned about. And two weeks after it was spread, we had a bird of gnats, I guess you call them super gnats, that would just surround the whole house. You'd have to cover yourself in a bag just to try to get to the car and hope that none came into the, to the building, or to the vehicle. As far as the building, we'd have to close the windows, the screens, turn the air conditioner on and just hope, you know, whatever came in, you could swat and kill. So the moral of that story was nearly too close to a person's dwelling because it is way too close. The other thing I wanted to look at is the actual air particulates for the CFO, CFO and animal feeding facilities. But it does cause health complications, sickness, disease and cancers to the animals in the barn, to the workers who maintain the animals' facilities and to the families and individuals subjected to the toxicities coming from these feeding facilities. Toxicities produced from these animal park facilities, interpersonal systems, from particulate elements in air we breathe, food we eat and water we drink. So mainly when a person comes up and says, you know, I live next to one, the smell is horrible, it just, you know, I can't swim out in my pool, I can't have family gatherings, I can't grill out, I can't mow my grass. It's horrible. What they're really saying is that it's an alarm going off in their head saying, well, I'm being subjected to something. Because it's just not the, it's not, it's not the farm smell. Back in the 70s, it was great. I loved it. Today, it's something that really attacks the body system by the air. And this is something that all Tyson membership should take a look at. It's being discussed all over the entire world. One of the things I'm going to touch on, the US habits, I'll introduce later on. But the first thing that enters the body is hydrogen sulfide, a gas that limits the ability of cells to use oxygen. Exposure to hydrogen sulfide in high levels can cause skin, eye and respiratory irritation, neurologic and cardiac disorders, seizure, comas and death. Chronic exposure at low levels, you may be at further distances away, can cause low blood pressure, headache, chronic cough and psychological disorders. The second particulate from the air is ammonia. It can cause irritation to the eyes, skin and respiratory tract. It is released in large quantities by chicken, turkey and hog facilities. The third is just basic particulate matter. The leading cause of bronchitis and asthma in people who are regularly exposed to it and can also be a cause of cardiac disorders, including arrhythmia and heart attacks. You know, it's a thump, thump, skip, thump, skip, thump, thump, skip. Endotoxins, poisons produced by bacteria disease are found in high concentrations of bacteria farms, but can cause respiratory problems even in extreme low concentrations. And fifthly, the carbon dioxide, which is a byproduct of decomposing the neuron. It causes shortness of breath, dizziness, inhumance and often kills confined animals by fixation.
We're out of time. What was the fourth one?
Endotoxins.
It's going to be hard for me to keep time and take minutes.
Right. Don, you're, you're three minutes in. Let me give you two minutes to finish up.
Oh, okay. I thought we signed up for 10 minutes at least.
That's right. And you know what? He is, he's an agenda item. I apologize.
All right. We'll give you your 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, so, so the air particle, the air particulates that people come in contact with in close proximities and even at further distances is a very, is a very important issue that a lot of us should, should consider. I mean, we have a, a chart here that was given from a comparison of the 1980 to 2008, which is the end stage renal disease. That's your shutdown of the liver. That's the toxins that come in. You try to clean them out, they go to the liver. There was only 17,337 incidences in 1980, 2008, 110,175. That's 636% increase. Maybe subjected to different things, but it seems like the correlation of a confined feeding operation increase. Just last week, well, two weeks ago, genetically modified corn, getting into the things that we actually eat, the feeding corn story.
We're not discussing corn. We're talking about land use and buildings, please.
Correct, correct. Because these animals eat genetically modified corn, it passes through them, the system. And what we need to know is that in four weeks, these rats, they got golf ball sized lesions and cancer from GM corn. What I understand, these feeding facilities, they do eat a lot of this genetically modified corn. It's 85% of the US crop. You'd be interested to know that all of Eric has put a ban on imported GM corn. I'll skip over that since you don't deem it to be important. So let's go to the water pollutants, which I just started into. I really didn't get to finish the water pollutants like I wanted to because I only have a few days. But industrial agriculture is one of the leading causes for water pollution in the United States. And granted, we're on a very hilly part of the land. If you look up in Illinois and parts of northern Indiana, we're able to control the water flow much better up there and try to guide it when we have floods and so forth and contain the water. Out here, it's like it goes in all different directions, which is a very big concern for our health. So water pollution from industrial farms not only damages the environment, kills wildlife, but it can also sicken and kill people. Since these farms exercise a little restraint when it comes to water usage, they tend to waste large quantities of water. Even when neighboring communities are experiencing water shortages, I talked to a retired employee from a local water company in Washington County, and he explained to me that he has seen firsthand a confined feeding animal facility, one of the big ones, using 1 million gallons of water per day. Now, can we see building work facilities like that and have a drought like we did this summer? We'd have the community begging for water. We drank out of the lake. It doesn't come out of the Ohio. So that's another concern there as well. More water pollution from industrial farms, reserve and storage and disposal of animal waste. I had to end it right there and I'll be able to report next, next time we meet next month on, on water issues. But, you know, as I report on this, you kind of say, well, Don, where in the world are we getting this information? You know? And well, we got, you know, part of my study come from the US Environmental Protection Agency, Research Triangle Park, use and observation around North Carolina, the Animal Feeding Operations Air Quality Study, the USDA Agricultural Research, Research and Service, Natural Academics Press in Washington DC, the Farm Safety Association, Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, Brigham and Merrick, the Food and Agricultural Organization of the United Nations, Kirkhorn, the US Department of Health and Human Services.
One minute.
You know, I have 41 different resources in here. That, so I'm not making this up. You know, and we all stand up and we say the pledge of allegiance. You know, pledges allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And in turn, we are promised and given a social security number. And with that, we are promised security in our health, in our safety, in our welfare. And what you people are doing is you're going to put that up for a vote. What you really need to do is go around to the existing facilities that are around here and talk to the neighbors. Ask about their health, see how the, the water flows, the air particulates or, or what's happening with that. There's really a lot more research to do before we start subjecting our residents here into something that could be detrimental to their health. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. This is Don Rogers. Okay. Any other good business? If not, I'm going to start opening this up to the audience and that. Like I would say, that if you have a common theme, I can give a little bit more time if there's a common theme for people in that. So we'd give three minutes for individuals, but if there's a common theme and somebody wants to give up their time to a common spokesman, we would appreciate that for Tom. Yes.
I think with the group here tonight, I think I represent many of them here tonight. And I think I've presented.
Yes, please present your name, who you represent, your address, please.
My name is David Whittington. I am the complex manager of Tyson Foods. I'm responsible for all operations here in southern Indiana. Address is 1507 Creek Stone Drive, NACC Corridin. Zip code down there is 47112.
Thank you. What was your title?
Complex Manager. I have the opportunity to not come represent many people. Tyson Foods here in southern Indiana, we employ 550 people in our operations here. Also have the opportunity to represent a large portion of the group here tonight, our family farmers who produce chickens and eggs and all the many things that basically is the foundation of our business. And one of the things I wanted to provide to Plan Commission tonight, just a quick handout.
I want to allow David the same time as Bob.
What, what I have presented to you is the economic impact that Tyson Foods and our Washington, Washington County family farmers, the economic impact on Washington County, what that is. And we'll go through this quickly and, you know, at the end, if you have questions, please ask. As far as our producers that are here in the room tonight, brawler producers who produce chickens for our plant in Corridin, we pay them approximately $4.1 million to produce our chickens. And then the hen and pullet farmers that are here tonight, we pay that group annually $1.6 million. And that's again to take care of our chickens and produce, produce the products for us. And in turn, they have tremendous investment in their facilities. Most recently, we've had some young, young gentlemen come into the business who are now growing chickens for us. And one chicken house this time cost over $200,000 to construct. So it's, it's a major, major capital outlay for our folks. Real quick, some other economic impact numbers. Our feed mill in Ramsey, Indiana, we use 50,000 bushels of corn each week to feed our chickens. And 60% of that corn comes from right here in Washington County. And the economic impact of that corn that we buy here from this county is $12.5 billion a year based on current corn costs. There are 25 brawler farms in Washington County. And this is, you know, just pure number. Some people, I know how they feel about that. But I think this is, there's also another side of the story. The birds that these folks produce for us will feed 675,000 people a week now here in the United States. And that's feeding people a quality food product. And we're proud of that. And something that we need to talk more, more about than what we do. In a year's time, chickens from the farms here in Washington County will feed 36 million people in a year's time. And again, that's good quality food products going to all parts of the United States. Property taxes, I think everybody here is pretty good about paying their property taxes on time. And that points to a quarter of a million dollars annually this group pays. The total economic impact on Washington County from our operations and that of family farmers who live here in Washington County is $18,450,000 a year. And I would venture to guess that agriculture is the biggest, biggest industry in this county. And with the planned proposed setbacks on future growth, and some of these folks here in the room would like to grow their operation in the future, and they've got children that would like to get into the business, this will probably limit or stop that growth. You know, the, and again, the proposed setbacks that are currently being considered puts not only these folks at risk in their business, but also continue purchasing corn from this county. We're right now in the process of building, spending $1 million to add additional corn capacity at our Ramsey feed mill to be able to store more corn. So we're investing into our business and we believe this is a good place to operate. Just finishing up, currently our producers are I.D.M. permitted through Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Another thing that we're very proud of is our contract. Our family farmers, they're in compliance. Just a few weeks ago, I.D.M. visited one of our farmer's operations and found no issues, correct?
Correct.
Good, clean bill of health. So again, we're proud of what they do and they did their business well. We appreciate that. I think the neighbors of Washington County should too. Just last few comments. You know, some of the things that you hear opposing our business, you know, you can get anything off the internet. Some of it's true, some of it's not. What I would ask the Plan Commission Commissioners, we would be glad, we Tyson, and I think our producers here in the room tonight would be glad to ask, to have you out at our facilities, let you come look, let you come smell, let you see how it works. And as far as concerns about health issues, I've heard nobody in our group coughing with respiratory issues tonight. And we've got Ralph Pickle in the room. Ralph's been growing chickens for how many years?
65 years.
65? 65 years, always alive. And Ralph looks pretty healthy here tonight. So, so we, going forward, as this process continues, our producers and Tyson Foods will continue to stay involved in it. We very much want to be a part of this. We want to contribute and see if we can't come to a resolution that everybody can live with. So I appreciate your time, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for David this time?
What is, what is your I.D. requirements for a setback now?
Just 100 feet.
100 feet?
Yes, sir. And our producers meet that or exceed it. In most cases, exceed.
This setback that you were referencing to, what was that that you were referencing? The setback that you were referencing to, what was that that you were referencing to, the law being proposed?
Uh, I'd seen seven hundred and fifty feet was the proposal. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. Your hundred feet is from what, property line?
Yes, sir. That's IDM. That's IDM requirements. And again, we meet and exceed the requirements from IDM. IDM.
On every farm?
Yes, sir.
I disagree with that idea.
I, we'll measure. We'll measure.
Not that I'm, not that it's an issue, but, uh... Another one called.
But, uh, you know, we, uh, it is easy to stand before this, uh, commission and talk about what we do. Uh, we make no apologies, we make no excuses. Uh, we do things the right way, and we're proud of that. And, you know, when you're doing something that I think is pretty noble, uh, feeding millions of people each year in this country, quality, quality food products, that's a big deal. And, uh, and again, we, we would be glad to invite you out, we'll go visit the farm, maybe less than a hundred feet from the property line, and we'll check you out. Uh, again, we, we're very, we feel very good about what we do. Yes, sir. I'm done with those other questions.
Okay. Any questions? I do appreciate your time, Dave, addressing that.
I would ask you a question. What does, uh, kind of as a general statement for Tyson, what is their guidelines for their producers in here? Do you just follow, uh, whatever the federal or state requirements are, or do you go by local conditions as well? Do you evaluate, in other words, do you evaluate case-by-case basis for development?
We do, we do. We, the state or local or federal guidelines for placing the farm, that, that's a baseline. And then after that, you consider, uh, you know, you cover those setbacks, and you look where you can exceed them. We have producers here in the room who actually will put, will build their houses in less than ideal protection. I mean in that is that it will cost them more in bringing, uh, it will cost them more in maintaining a, a longer driveway to the, to the houses. And, uh, they, they will go above and beyond as far as, uh, fans and the direction they're turning in. Uh, we will turn the houses and the fans in the opposite direction of the nearest neighborhood. So we try to use good common sense. Uh, my family's been in the chicken business, uh, I've been in it, not like the Ralph, I've been in it since I was a kid. My grandfather grew chickens, uh, my father worked for Tyson Foods for forty-seven years, I've been with him for twenty-five. And, uh, and, you know, we try to use that good common sense in making those decisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
I saw, David, you had put it in there, and you wanted to address the plant commission, please state your name.
Yes.
Your address, please.
Oh, I was just gonna put mine. Oh, okay. Address. Uh, yes, David Norton, uh, fifty-four, thirty-four North State Road, thirty-nine Stansburg, Indiana, which is Little York Gibson Township. And I wanna associate myself with your name, Mr. Whittington.
That is correct.
I will associate myself a hundred percent with his remarks, and he duplicated a couple of things I was gonna talk about. Um, just say that there's some duplication of effort, there's the IDE M, and I think maybe the best way, if there's pollution issues or some of these issues, rather than creating county level for doing the same thing that the state's doing, to lobbying state legislatures to change the laws if their laws are inadequate. And I think, that brings up that this is sort of like, you know, a reason for bringing in zoning. So you got a problem with chicken houses, where people perceive a problem, and so then bringing in zoning to have a comprehensive zoning of everybody, all businesses, all types of agriculture, all types of property in the whole county, and it's like using an atom bomb to kill a nap. You know, if the county commissioners want to have an ordinance to do something about poultry houses, they can write an ordinance about poultry houses. You don't have to have county laws on them. So I think this is, plus some of these pollution issues, pollution should be something addressed at the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Or if the rules for turkey houses need to be equalized with chicken houses, well, shouldn't that be true in the other counties of Indiana? You know? So, so I'm gonna associate myself a hundred percent with his remarks. This is not that, every different county in Indiana doesn't need a different set of regulations, I'm sure he doesn't want that. He'd rather deal with one regulation for Indiana. I know that's not your fault, it's the commissioners who want the zoning ordinances, and it's your job to write his own ordinance, no matter what, so. I know that that's your job, so. It's through the commissioners that something can be done about having zoning itself. Um, uh, let's see. And, uh, just to simplify, that we don't want extra hoops for businesses to jump through because, you know, they can build poultry houses somewhere else. You may, you know, if we have a harder regulation than the counties next door, we'll just be sending business and employment to another county. And, uh, and I think that's a problem that the United States makes at the federal level. They have more and more restrictions and rules on things, and people go overseas, they go to Mexico or China. But I, I think, you know, we don't have this problem in America right now that we're at full employment and business is just wonderful, and we need to put extra rules on everybody. This may not be the time to do that. And, um, I just wanted to address another thing more specifically about the, uh, the, uh, August twenty-first IDE. Um, one of the things I requested was the draft minutes, and my reading from the law was there's a specific thing in there that has the finalized minutes amount available that the draft minutes have to be provided, or draft memorandum. So if there are minutes gonna be made, they have to be made off of something, I presume. Somebody, I mean, that's one reason I had a very broad request, is they might not be called minutes, but somebody took some kind of nonsense, or I don't know how they're gonna come up with a draft minute. But I'm gonna hold off on sending something to the public counselor, 'cause if we're gonna have a meeting this week, maybe I can get the finalized minutes, and then we'll refer back. I just wanna note for the future, that it says, you know, if you don't have the minutes approved and ready, that you have to provide the draft, I just, I just wanna retain that for future reference. In case I don't get the actual minutes very soon. And...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 go ahead.
Okay. And, uh, another thing, so I just wanna ask a question you can answer later. Are there any plans, is the county gonna try, is a zoning legislation aimed at pushing people away from single-family standalone homes toward apartment buildings, or pushing trailers into trailer parks? I just wanna ask if that's something. I don't wanna refer to it.
Not pushing anything. This is a...
That's not being contemplative.
We're, uh, we're contemplating, you know, what you're talking about is mobile homes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay? We have a, any comprehensive plan that addresses, you know, that we need to be in our ordinance to be dra, drafting language pertaining to, you know, uh, to mobile homes. So we will be drafting something according to what the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan is out there, we review and see what that is and review that, and we haven't even got to that yet.
I can tell you there's no language currently moving address.
And as I recall, um, one of the reasons the comprehensive plan did not pass the board of commissioners the first time was because of language in there, um, regarding, uh, manufactured housing, and basically, uh, it was, it was sent back to the plant commission and modified such that, um, manufactured houses were not regulated, as I recall, and last, there was a mobile home park that would be submitted to.
So you only regulate those that happen to be in a mobile home park?
As I recall, that's what commissioners saw.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Mike, Karen?
I just had a quick question. David, I apologize if I'm wrong, but I, if I remember, that was the big, that was a big hangup when it went through, but as, as far as I recall, that's not been something we've discussed, but...
We haven't got to that.
I trust your, I trust your memory on that. Until I found out.
Because I'm, I'm sure there's, I wanna make sure, since the meeting, since we essentially took the meeting, since they voted to say that the August twenty-first meeting didn't happen, do you still want meeting minutes from the meeting that now we're deleting everything? I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying, I just wanna make sure I know what I need to get back here.
That David was preparing a memorandum of what happened, but, but then again, everything that happened at that meeting, if we reflect that memorandum, it's been received by the court.
Okay. So, and thank you for the...
I called him this morning, earlier today to remind him that...
And thank you for sending me that draft.
Wow.
And I will treat it as a draft.
Rodden.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Green. I've been watching the government, local government for the last six years. I was in the same meeting when Shawna, uh, the flaming chicken incident is what I always think of it as, where that blind woman, you were gonna locate the, the CAFO a hundred feet from the blind woman, okay? And that's what brought on the first set, the seven hundred and fifty-foot setback. That incident where there was no control, or people didn't have any control over their own property or felt that they lost it, um, that's what the kickback was. That's what the retribution from the community was. After that, I had actually, I think I even talked to you. I may have talked to you. And I said, "Look, you know, we really can't demonize these people, these people are, you know, chicken houses are not evil." And I, I, I was gonna let, run, line up the commissioners to go out to Corbin to go see that chicken house there? And you know what? The, the meeting that you, you poor man, the meeting that you were, uh, going to attend, and I had reserved for, Lana Sullivan looked at me and said, "Where's your chicken meeting, Rhonda?" Okay. This last election, you, I helped with the, I was instrumental. I was right up there trying to get a chicken house on the, the, the farm tour, because it's important. The community didn't know what you guys did. I did that, I worked on that, didn't I, lady? I'm a member of Farm Bureau. I'm a board member, and I have pushed and tried to go ahead and represent you, 'cause I, I don't think it's fair to have you demonized to the public. It's not good for the community, it's not good for anybody. That's what reciprocal is going to do. It's not the setback, it's that it's reciprocal. If you land a chicken house, you can be seven hundred and fifty feet from a neighbor, or whatever, whatever the, the setback is. It's a four hundred feet, takes up about twenty-six acres of setback. If you only own seven acres, you can still locate there, but the setback goes on to other property, right? If you add reciprocal, the way they have it written up, your neighbors cannot build on their property. They lose the rights to their property. That's what they're sneaking through. And I know that's, I'm, I'm really pissed off. Uh, you yelled at me this morning, I'm still coming down off of that. There isn't enough cake in the world for me to calm down right now. I know why you brought these people in here, I don't care if God's standing before me. If you pass that reciprocal, the backlash from the community will be extreme. Oh! You are so frustrating.
Thank you, Rodden.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna make a comment on the previous person here, Pete Cherry, I forget his name, but, uh...
I didn't know him.
Okay, you're a very, very nice guy, very nice. What you may not know, uh, he, he, there was a mention that if you have a problem with the air particulates, the things you're breathing, go talk to the IDE M. The IDE M would ignore even stone, like I said, go away, because back in two thousand and six, during the Bush administration, there was people that passed a law that said, that exempt factory farms from that type of regulation. They don't care, they don't have to respond to it. Just thought she would know.
Okay. Other audience members, please, I mean, use this opportunity to talk and, uh, cause while we're, yes, go ahead.
I am...
Name, address, please.
Robert Taylor, uh, three three eight seven Marrow Road, Salem. I'm not affiliated with the chicken business, I am actually under contract with this new far bestow. They built, for, for, for one, first thing I'm gonna say is, I find that ignorance and lack of knowledge of knowing how the operation runs, leaves people to say things they don't exactly know. But what I've got to say is, I'm under IDM, I'm not under IDM rules right now. But when that far best representative stepped on my farm for the first time, the first thing he said was, "You're gonna follow IDM rules regardless if you follow them or not." I followed. I had no, I passed out no papers, I made trips around the community, took miles out. And you know, the first thing people said to me when I went up to their places was, "I don't want you to build that, you're gonna kill me, if you need help, I need a job." You know, people in the work helps support their families, it ain't, "You're killing me," you know, it ain't that. But what I'm saying is, I've got three barns, I'm under thirty thousand on that farm, I've built my three hundred and twenty feet off the property line, you know? What happens if I wanted to build another barn here in three or four years, and I've got an existing operation running, and I can't meet that? Is that gonna shut my, I mean, is that gonna shut me down there since I'm currently not meeting IDM standards as we speak now?
We're, we're looking at different setback language, you know, and also looking into a different, uh, density of population, you know, just to, in general. You know, the least populated areas, the setback language is smaller. The more densely populated in a half-mile radius, the setback is larger. So as population increases in an area, the setback language gets larger. Basically, we're looking for good site location placement is what we're looking at, using as parameters. We're, and we're looking at a score sheet, you know, that deals with if your residence is closer to the, is the closest, uh, to the operation, you know, that it scores more points. And as the higher your score, the more receptive it is, and if you score to a certain amount of points, you don't even have to come to the plant commission at all. We're trying to simplify the method so that producers and landowners and contractors and business can kinda take a look and do their own sites for them, see if there's proper site location before you even have to even deal with this.
Could I ask your name again, I'm sorry?
Robert Taylor.
So to answer your question, you know, you know, if there was proper site location with the proper setback in there, you know, you should be able to work within the parameters. Now, if your buildings move out toward the area, no setback type of language still applies to your, well, we even put the compost in there too, as a parameter of the building too, instead of just the buildings. We think that also the composting is an important, uh, facility on those farms. So the setback language deals with whatever is close. So, you know, your input would be helpful in there, 'cause what we're trying to do is get proper, proper language as far as what is a proper setback. You know, we've heard the reciprocal, what the reciprocal is, is basically whatever, if you have to put a building, uh, you know, four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet away from a residence, then the reciprocal is, is that they can't build a residence within that four hundred and fifty feet. So it's a, well, it works both ways, and it's controversial, you know, on land use in there, especially people that are around the, the perimeter of that farm. But, you know, what we are striving for is to get proper setback, you know? We have different setbacks for churches, schools, and that also in language too. We have different setbacks for churches, schools, and that also in language too, and that. So we're looking at all aspects in there. We are not just throwing a number out there. We're actually looking at maps, we're actually drawing half mile circles around there, identifying the population. We're putting setback language, you know, in effect to see what the impact that will have on the industry and residences in our rural communities. So we are studying this very closely and using all the tools that are available. But we do need input back from the public.
Did, did you say three hundred and twenty-eight feet?
You know, I'm.
From a property line?
Yeah, from a property line. So how far are you from a residence?
I've got a house within six hundred foot of me.
Okay.
I've actually got a family member's house within six hundred foot, you know, of that. And you know, multiple houses within a thousand feet along the road, so I mean, I just. And if I go any direction, I'm gonna be pretty darn close, you know?
And unfortunately, we would like to put in there, you know, other, you know, as, if you have a, we, we tried language as far as green buffers and stuff like that, you know, between residences and stuff like that, but we actually have to look at a site as it is, not what you will do in the future if you were to put a green vegetation, hedge row or something on thans, you know, and those type of things. We looked at that, but we don't have any way to really jurisstick that after we, you know, okay, a building site. So we have to pull that even, even though I understand that that's a good management practice. How about, yes, Max?
Max Green, one, zero, one, three, zero, West Sutherland, Campbell's Burden. My understanding is even if they would be, the regulation changes and they be noncompliant as an agriculture, noncompliant agricultural use, if they're in operation three years out of five, you can't shut them down anyway, according to the blue, blue book there, the.
We're not even looking at that.
No, no, but I'm saying, he, he had concerns that, if he's at three hundred and something feet, if the number would be like four hundred feet, would he be noncompliant and not be able to do anything else?
Oh, well.
So I, I mean, it's, they're pretty well safe, I mean, if they get grandfathered in, you're in good shape. Now whether you can expand your operation or not depends on what's, uh, uh, come up with these regulations down the road. What, what the big concern is right now, the IDM regulations that the Tyson chicken people are following, they got the hundred feet that they have to set back, and that's, that's a reasonable, that, that's what we're saying, that the turkeys, the same size house with the same amount of manure, should follow somewhat the same guidelines. Right now, they're unregulated, if they want to be fifty foot from the property line, they can. And that's what's actually hurting the, the poultry industry being lumped into one big group where it's not actually the same thing, because the ones that are regulated are having to follow certain guidelines, and the others aren't compelled to do so. And what the reciprocal problem is, if they put fifty foot from the property line, and the reciprocal becomes four hundred foot, that takes three hundred and fifty foot of the neighbor's ground that he can't build his house on, but the, the operator has an exemption. So they can build on that same ground, if you'll sell it to them, they can build on it. But they're saying they're just that much better than you, that they can build there on that ground that you own, and you have the entitlement to, but you can't build on it, because they, they want to turn a profit, and they were willing to go out and borrow even more money than you to do so. That's the problem that I see with reciprocal. And it demonizes the industry by saying that you're trying to steal land from your neighbor, because you're too close to the, you're three hundred and fifty foot, therefore you're stealing fifty off your neighbor. And I think the reciprocal shouldn't be there, I don't think it should be a part of it, is, is my argument towards reciprocal. And the, the other setbacks, I mean, they can decide that they shouldn't be, you know, come up with something that's equitable for the, the chickens and the turkeys and the hogs and everything. But my argument against the reciprocal is that it demonizes the people that have tried to do a good thing, and you're looking at a lot of your producers that are four hundred foot off the road, and they're, they're being thrown in with the same group that are putting houses fifty foot from a property line and making, making y'all look bad. That's, that's my position on the reciprocal.
Okay. Is that a question? Thank you, Max.
Bill Bowers.
Okay.
In Indiana. But my thing is, is you guys brought up Farbest. And these guys, we build one chicken house, we're CAFO. And what I understand, you guys are talking CAFO. They can build three turkey houses, and they're not CAFO. So what you're doing ain't gonna affect their top.
We also want to hear numbers.
Well, what kind of numbers you can't even look at?
Well.
You gonna say the chicken business?
I was, just to, to answer your question in that, I was with the state pork producers as a state president in nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-six, and I was involved in, you know, drafting some of the confined feeding law. And at that time, I thought the regulation that dealt with the animal numbers was dealt with manure load per animal. I was wrong. It was a political number, you know, for every species. For hogs, it's six hundred, and that'd be equivalent to that with turkeys, that would be eighteen thousand. But the regulation is for thirty thousand. And it's two fifty for beef steer, and that's equivalent to an eighteen thousand. So I, I was even, I even took the assumption that it dealt with the manure load that was by species, and I was wrong. Uh, but that thirty thousand figure was a figure that was put out there, you know, and accepted in the law. So what we are trying to do, we're going back to actually manure production. Because we build, you know, units according to manure load and manure storage, why not go back to regulation as far as the manure, as far as the guidelines, go back to actually manure production? So actually, those figures lowered in the poultry, and actually raised for chickens to forty-one thousand, and that, for turkeys, it dropped to eighteen thousand. So I don't know if that answers your question or not. That's, what we're trying to do is get good site location, so that residential and neighbors can actually have something that everybody works with in that. So we're, you know, IDM regulations have certain guidelines and stuff, and we're trying to get in there to put your site location, which is you doing as Tyson as far as with IDM, we're trying to replicate that again with Farbest. And I know that Farbest people are adhering to what IDM regulations are, because that's only pertinent for their industry if they keep up with those standards and stuff. But we're trying to regulate, we're trying to get into where we can get past this threshold of just thirty thousand, you know? We're trying to get down to lower numbers so that we can help site placement of some barns that are not permitted by IDM. Fair enough?
Before we get to the Tyson representatives here, I think we ought to ask some questions.
Actually, I've got, I've got some questions I want, maybe ask all the producers here, I was looking. Well, one thing I'd like to say, um, a year ago, I knew nothing about the poultry industry and, and due to a job change, I know a lot about the poultry industry, I'm selling propane, so things have changed, and I've probably been to every operation that I could find down. So I'm pretty familiar with the situation. I still think that, you know, we need to have some ground rules, everybody understands, you know, whether you're building a house. But, uh, I just want to ask this, I was looking at some figures from Rush County, which is a lot of, some of the things that we took, I think were out of Rush County. Does anybody have a operation under forty acres, where the ground around, you know, only at least forty acres? How many do you own?
Ten.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ten.
Ten. Uh, minimum lot width, two hundred and fifty feet? You meet those? Okay, so everybody, we currently have a seven hundred and fifty foot setback that's been in effect probably four years now. I don't know, did you, did Tyson folks, did you know that? I think you probably did.
The ones that are over thirty thousand.
Well, it was, okay. Because we don't have, we never had planning and zoning, the commissioners, before I took off this, passed this regulation, and really never, I don't think it ever got out to anybody, so.
I think it was mailed to all the, all the.
It was?
Well, I think it's been mailed since we started, I think that issue came out of the meeting about a year ago.
When you look at a site location, what, what do you, you normally look at just what IDM requires?
IDM actually comes to, to the site, and we rely on their guidance.
Which is, which is four hundred feet per, from a residence, right?
That's new.
Whatever their, whatever their requirements are, we follow them.
There was not.
There was nothing, that's right.
That's why this county passed one.
Yeah.
It is, you know, just listening to ideas from Rush County, we Tyson has no operations, I'm not in that county. I guess I have a concern that we're trying to reinvent the wheel here a little bit, and the scoring system that, that you mentioned, that's, you know, who, who sets, who sets the rules on that? And that, that, that is a concern. We have regulations through state today that I've stated that we were meeting and exceeding. You know, it, it's very difficult to operate in counties who have a different set of rules and all the counties around you. And, you know, again, again, that, that's a concern for, for Tyson Foods, and I thank for our producers here behind me.
Well, what kind of impact do you feel the, the upcoming four hundred foot setback's gonna have?
And keep in mind, that's from a residence, which is, that's already, that's already law.
That's right. Four hundred is already law.
Yeah, the forward basis, we can, we can make that work, you know? Besides the law, you know, we got to, we got to abide by it anyway, but, you know, we don't see that being a major issue. And we can understand, we can understand setback, so, the distance, you know? You know, we, we didn't, we didn't call IDM or anybody and argue at that point, so.
Well, we have it starting at four hundred, but then the scoring system, and what we're working on is, it starts at four hundred, but if your scores are low, you may have to, you may have to increase that setback, depending on, you know, where your score is. It may end up, you know, going to seven hundred and fifty feet if you're, if the density of the area that you're in is, you know, so many people. That's kind of a thing we're passing around, I, I guess.
Currently, the, the current population density on average is eighteen point seven in the, in the county.
I, I think too, you know, like we were talking about on reciprocal setbacks, you know, if, if the setback's at four hundred feet, there's nobody around you, you decide to build this operation, say, two hundred feet off the road, well, the reciprocal setback's gonna protect you in the fact that somebody can't build a house to, you know, right across the road, two hundred feet from the, from the operation. That's, that's where the reciprocal setback, I, I personally think, is fair for the farmer and the landlord, you know?
I understand your point, because we've seen situations in the past where we've got an existing operation, and then someone builds across the road from it, and.
And then they complain two years later, or a year later, or whatever. The question I wanted to ask was, two ideas have been brought forth. The idea is not to demonize the industry. The idea was to protect the farmers also. Not only, we can't, this whole thing's about balancing people's interests. People have an interest in the quiet enjoyment of their land, without pollution and smells and toxins and all these things that, that people claim, and at the same time, the farmer has an interest in providing a productive operation and a place of employment for themselves and our people, and that means a living. And just balancing people's interests and rights without them interfering, you know, minimizing the interference that they have on each other is really the goal. And two things have come up in the course of doing this, since the commissioners rather rapidly pieced together ordinance based on the situation that Rhonda Green had mentioned from several years ago. Uh, one is, that I'd like to ask you all. Is there a fear, is there a concern that there are types of activities, whether it involves light, sound, pollution, whatever, that a neighbor can impose upon a poultry operation that can have a negative impact on the productivity of the operation? And secondly, are there any real life examples that you can think of where someone, you've got an existing operation, someone builds within the setback and later complains, files suit about a nuisance or anything like that?
Uh, I guess to answer, answer your question, they, there's very few neighbor noise light type issues that occur. We do have one situation here in Washington County where a, a neighbor lives close to a hen farm, and he's got a security light there at his home, and that light shines through the curtains of the hen house. Well, it's very important that hens get their rest, just like the rest of us. And that light actually keeps them up and hurts the performance, the production, the production of that, of that farm. Our, our family farmer and our, and we as Tyson, we've worked with that neighbor. And the neighbor's put shields around the light, or around the security light to try to block some of that. So, so in situations like that, we, we try to just work with the neighbor on a one-on-one type basis, and that, that's been successful. It's, it's nothing where we have to go typically past just a, just a conversation there at, there and all the property, so. Did I answer your question?
As to the first.
Okay.
So the second one was, have there been instances where someone has come along after the fact, built within, you know, there's no reciprocal setback, so when the, when the operation went in, it was fine, it wasn't, there was no one within any setback or anything, and then a neighbor came in after the fact and built, and later complained and caused problems for the farmer, either through a nuisance action or a felony fine mission action.
That has happened, I, I can't think of an example, that here in Washington County, but that has happened in Harrison County.
And just to clear the things up, that's the purpose of a reciprocal setback, is to protect not just the homeowner from the farmer, but to protect the farmer from the homeowner as well. Nobody's trying to demonize anybody here, it's just trying to find a balancing of, of people's respective interests. And so whether reciprocal setback is the proper way to do that or not, intention and the goal is that, is to have mutual respect and mutual protections.
So we're kind of having a back and forth conversation here. I, I guess the question I would have for the plan commission is, is we, our producers are compliant with IDM. IDM has been, they make unannounced inspections of, of these folks' farms, chicken farms. There's been no out of compliance, been no fines, none of that, they, they're within the law and most cases exceeding that. We Tyson, we have not received any complaints, never complaints or any issues from Washington County neighbors who live close to our operations. And I guess I don't understand the urgency, which, which I'm gathering here is not the urgency of getting something done.
The only urgency is, I don't know if there is an urgency, this has been debated for about five years now. And this is something that has, we adopted a comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, and have slowly been plodding along up to this point, and. Well, did you read it? Was it, did that come from a newspaper article, or one of the commissioner?
I said, I found out about this.
Yeah. Yeah, there was, there was a comment that was in the newspaper.
Yeah, there was, there was a comment that, in the newspaper, that they downplayed it, said, "Get something done, you know, fast." So, I mean, you know, at the last commissioners meeting, he was, I mean, you've probably all read it in the paper, but... He said he wouldn't sign anything less than 750-foot setback from the property line. And John Foles, you know, the other two commissioners, they have to vote on this, whatever we decide on and come up with. And I don't know what, I don't know if this is gonna go around, we got an election coming up too. I didn't run, so I'm, I don't know if it's gonna be around come next year. So, I don't know how this is all gonna pan out. But, I mean, there's, there's, I shouldn't say urgency, but I think people want to know what, what the rules are, you know, the... Because, I mean, we've got Louisville spreading into Washington County like it does Harrison County. We had no planning and zoning, you know, Harrison County has planning and zoning and we're trying to get into the 21st century. It's not just because of poultry. I mean, this started 18, 20 years ago with some landfalling, stuff going on and there was a call to get this thing started, so... You know, on that reciprocal setback, if you did a 200-foot setback from where you build a poultry operation from the property line, are there very many ones right now that you, that you're less than 200 feet? Because if you can do 200 feet...
From the property line, all of them.
From the property line, I mean, and I don't mean if it's your family member's property line.
And it's funny, that happens a whole lot. It's, it's the uncle that lives next door, he's, he's closest neighbor.
I don't know that.
Yeah, on the property line, if your neighbor says another jointing farm, he signs off saying we can build closer to that, can he?
Yeah, he can be down to the, to a variance. What I was wondering is if we did a 200 property line setback and if someone wants to build a house, if you made a setback, reciprocal setback, 400 feet, then the poultry operation owns 200 feet, then the homeowner will take 200 feet and you got your 400 feet.
That sounds, that sounds like the reciprocal thing would make it worse for these us chicken guys trying to build. I mean, you're, you are, I mean, you're making it harder, people are gonna fight us more to build. They're gonna try to fight us off because of your setback.
I mean, is anybody really gonna build less than... How often is someone gonna build less than 400 feet coming up?
It happens.
Does it happen?
These guys that have like 10, 10-acre places, 10-acre places, a 400-foot setback, that's 26 acres.
Now, I said if we do 200 on the poultry operation, 200 on the, on the...
Look, look, you know, you go ahead and you, you take the property rights from your neighbors. Which one of you people need to go over to the neighbor and say, "You can't build there"? You know?
Well, that's a thing though, but you retain an exemption for yourself. So even though you take your poultry house 200 foot back, you can put your own house 50 foot from the property line right there on the corner. And then tell your neighbor, "No, no, no, you can't build within 50 foot of your property line, but I can. I'm much better than you."
And these people do not want that to happen.
Well, we're just trying to avoid the nuisance lawsuits going on.
No, you're not.
Mr. Powers, I did cut you off a little bit, I'll let you go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, I have a question. And you said you've been on a lot of our farms.
Uh-huh.
This gentleman over here is talking about how bad the odor, the smell, you got things like that on. Now, all the farms that you've been on, have you had a lot of odor?
Just one.
Just one, now how many?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say...
Was it a chicken farm or a hog farm?
It was turkey.
Turkey?
Yeah. I'm West Washington, yeah. Little road, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Can't count that one.
The first, first chicken farms though, you've never been on a farm.
And...
Well, sir...
I mean, if you get up within 100 feet, you're gonna smell it. But I'm gonna say...
Do you know anything, something strong, something, you know, just...
Well, I went up there, that day I was, I was...
I guess it depends if it rains.
Yeah, because yours did that one day. But it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't horrible.
It was, uh, the other lady, I think in the very back, had her hands up for... Yes.
He asked the question that I was gonna ask.
Okay, alright.
Backward.
Uh, yes, could you please state, state the name, please?
I'm Ralph Pickroll, Lee, on George Porter Road, and John's been to my house. I lived there for 45 years with a chicken house 50 foot from my back door. And he didn't complain when he come to mine. My mom raised chickens, she died when she was 92 years old, she was in chickens a lot of that time. So I don't see where we come up with neighbors having health problems and everything, but we've actually lived it. And it's up to the farmer whether he wants to have a decent place and keep the smell down. And that, and if you try, and most of the farmers do, you don't, you're not gonna have that problem as far as environmental and all that, because we've got guidelines out there. When we spread chicken, it has to be 50 foot from the ditch line, 50 foot from the fence line and every plant. So, I mean, we got guidelines, we gotta go by. They take water samples coming into our farms, they go there and take water samples going off our farms. We're not hurting the waters, apply it all.
Dave, I got a question for you, and maybe you can help me understand this a little bit. Right now, IDIM setbacks, 400 feet correct from a residence?
No, you're correct.
Right. Okay, so you've got a producer that has this facility 200 feet from the road, which I believe is awesome. Now, what, how, what... Say somebody goes across the road, wants to build that, a home 50 feet off the road, now you've got a 250-foot setback. Who's in the wrong there in Harrison County or where would you...
Well, we mentioned Harrison County and I've, I've worked quite a bit with the planning commissioner there and Eric Wise. That is kind of the coordinator of the group. And when we built there, it's, you know, we got an existing operation, we got backup stuff. We got a good example. We've got a poultry farm that is just south of Corde. And it, that farm's been there, I mean, he's been there for probably 40 years. He's been there for 40 years. He got it, he got it from his grandfather. And there's a subdivision that is built in the last 10 years right across, right across the road from. Far as in Harrison County, there is no reciprocal or any type setback type thing there for new residents going in close to our facilities. But the, the thing that is, I think, most important is those houses are, I'd say, $200,000 new homes. And we have got no complaints from any of the neighbors who have built new homes across the farm, across the road from this, maybe I spoke to him. So...
But I guess what I'm saying is, you know, IDIM's rules is 400 feet.
Correct.
So if they're not 400 feet, who's in the wrong?
I don't think IDIM, if I follow your question correctly, IDIM's not addressing existing operations.
Okay, but I'm talking about a, a farm that's gonna go in tomorrow and builds it 200 feet off the road. And five years from now, somebody decides they wanna build a home 50 feet off the road. Now you have a 250-foot setback, it will not be in that 400-foot, that is the law.
The way the law is written, then, I, I apologize for, but the way it's written right now, in that scenario, that farm would not be able to expand their operation unless the new barn, the existing barns are grandfathered, so to speak, but any new structures would have to be constructed at least 400 feet away from any residence that was constructed after the original construction.
So a home could come in and build without any type of restrictions right now?
At the state level right now, yes, as long as there isn't, like, for example, right now in, in a county, there's no zoning. So, let's say I have two chicken houses that are 200 feet off the road. And I built those in 2000. In 2002, Shawna built a house 50 foot off the road right across from me. And so then, I wanna build a, onto the third barn back behind there, I'm still, or, you know, at, I'm too sure, according to the state, I cannot add that third barn unless I can create 400 feet from Shawna's house to that new barn. The old barns are never gonna say anything about, the only, the only thing that could possibly happen is if for some reason they lost a permit, then you might have to do some, they call them alternate compliance, I mean, you may have to jump through some hoops. But realistically, I cannot add another barn without being 400 feet from Shawna's new barn.
Thank you. That helped me understand.
Okay.
So, just out of curiosity, that new subdivision, how far are those homes from the barns?
Uh, they can, those new homes, they can sit on the front porch and see the two chicken houses. What would you designate them to? And those closest houses? A little more than 500 feet?
And one on the corner, maybe it's about 500?
Yeah, I think they're less than 500 feet. And the thing is, keep in mind, is somebody, somebody had the idea to put a subdivision in there, a lot, put the lots in. And with people building and buying houses in that subdivision, they bought those and you would have to be blind not to see the chicken farm across the road. They bought houses, I'd say now there's probably 10 or, I'd say 10 or 12 houses in that subdivision, been built in the last five years. We've gotten no complaints from it. As far as I know, the growers have not gotten any complaints. And it's, it's done fine. So, and, and one thing to keep in mind is Tyson Foods, we, we watch our producers and how they make sure they're staying within IDIM rules. And that I mean, if, for example, if you clean out a chicken house and you have the litter that comes out of the house, if they were stayed out on the ground uncovered, we would address that well. And what I have done in the past is, is once we address it well, they don't take immediate action, we will withhold chickens, the next lot of chickens till they get cleaned out. So, you know, to me, that's part of being a good neighbor, that's part of doing things right. We don't need the government to help us, you know, guide us and watch right. You know, we know, I think we know the company, right way to treat our neighbors and I think we've got a good track record of that.
I want to try and wrap this up by nine o'clock, I will, I hope you guys would appreciate that too. But I don't want to stifle anybody from making comments and stuff. I think we've had good discussion, you know, the mall parties here, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate some of you producers allowing us to come onto your farm and see how that you do your production on it. I do appreciate that. I think we just went to a conservation day, soil conservation, John was there too. Gerald Green hosted the tour on that and saw a lot of conservation practices being in that. I will commend that a properly managed farm smells a lot better than an improperly managed farm. But in our aspects of land use, we can't regulate that. So, I do appreciate the industry self-regulating themselves and the producers being conscious of being, of making efforts in that way. So, I do want to make that comment. So, anybody else would like to address anything? Is there anything we haven't? I know there's a lot of things we haven't covered in there, and hopefully this dialogue continues in that, as far as it giving us guidance. Yes?
Alright, one quick question.
Okay.
Michael Galton, you're a road builder, who's in Indiana. What are the exact proposed distances? Because the paper read, which John stated, possibly 750 feet from a property line. And, you know, 750 feet from a property line, I don't know if there's a piece of property in the county that would... Now, I own 230 acres and there's no place on my property that would go into it.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, probably what's on the books is 750 feet from the residence, nothing from the property line. What do we have on the property lines?
We, we didn't, it's all, we, we, yeah, we do, we have a little bit of... Everything is in a draft form in there?
Where you, you've read in the paper is one of, you had a commissioner made a comment that I wouldn't sign anything that doesn't have a 750-foot setback from mall property lines.
And that's kind of the way I read it in the paper.
Yeah.
You know, I looked at that, said, well, you know, there's, along with everybody else, they said, well, there's no place for it.
Yeah.
Some, some of the things in here, let's see, located 200, 200 feet from the center of the county road, that's, that's one in there. And then 200 feet from the existing off-site, uh, off-site house. And there is the starting point, you know, on it, as the, and then it goes into a scoring system and deals with population.
Yes? Yeah, just like to address that real quick. Ordinance to establish minimum setback distances was written, distance from existing dwellings, 750 feet. Now, dwelling is a very vague key word. You look it up, it says, um, the living structure. Or it says the, the area, or it says the place. So, where does a person dwell?
We are looking at the residence.
Well, then we need to say that, because a lot of people are gonna get confused.
That's what we're dealing with.
That's what, that, that's been rewritten.
Yeah, that's been rewritten.
That was done in one week, from one meeting to the next, and that, and that's the whole point of this. Since that time the planning commission's been developed, we've spent months considering rehashing, investigating, hiring a consultant, considering visiting and educating ourselves, trying to come up with a more comprehensive, well-thought-out proposal for the commissioners to consider an ordinance on, because that three-quarter page document was hastily written and that was an urgent kind of respond to a specific situation type ordinance. And, and the whole purpose, I think, of the method that people are using about this to try to well define everything, prevent confusion and get input from everyone. Because you can imagine in one week or two week period in which that was written and signed, how much input was received by various interested parties.
Do you know where the 750 came from? Guidelines are language.
I don't prefer second above the language.
But that's it. Okay, just, just for you to know.
Well, and in reaction to the incident that Shawna was involved with and the blind woman and the flaming chicken incident, that was the, the backlash. That was the backlash. And, you know, David Brown pissed me off the gate too, alright, but...
Please refer, not in the verbiage of the band, like just what you said, please.
Okay, angered me this morning also, okay? And, but, to go ahead and kind of like, he was reacting also to the reciprocal setback. And so, once again, you know, he was, he, at first, when we had talked to him about the reciprocal at the fair or whenever we did, he was wanting to go ahead and why don't we just use the state standards? And then, when the reciprocal did not come off, the document, that's how he reacted to it and it got backlash reaction. So, that's, that's where the 750 came from. He at first wanted to go ahead with the state standards and then, because he's frustrated with the board and the reciprocal setback and he can't vote on that, he can't have that pass, the reciprocal, he said 750.
I was referring back to the original language of the 750.
I was referring back to the original language of the seven fifty.
And I was there too with that one, yeah, seven hundred and fifty was the landfill.
Yes.
I just want to, I clearly understand some of what we're hearing.
All right.
You mentioned something at the beginning about the far best hub out there and different regulations. Are you all looking as a county to put, get certain regulations on, or change things as far as, you know, quotas on amount of birds in a building from chickens to turkeys? Are you all looking to change something in the county to put tiger restrictions on? A three barn, turkey barn, that's going to have the same amount as one house chicken farm?
Yeah.
Yeah, it picks up, it picks it up to put you on the same field as what Tyson barns are, you know, to, they have an IDM regulation in there right now, the far best, there's nothing on the books because there's no, they don't have it up from yet, and there's no guidelines, because of our guidelines deal with CFOs and CAFOs right now, you know, as far as their numbers. So, there is a reduction in those numbers to pick up, you know, two and three barn systems, you know, even on turkeys, to, for site location, it is trying to address that, you know, um, so, you know, that is, that's, you know, that's a good clarification of that. What we're looking for is good site placement, you know, trying to balance this thing, you know? So, I see, I'm glad to see this participant of producers here, you know, we've had other factions in here, but I'm glad to see the producers. It's the most producers I've seen, you know, at a plant commission, so I appreciate it.
We'll keep bringing them back.
All right.
Good, very good.
It's good.
Not, uh, not, go ahead.
Eric Albertson, Perry Road. So, twenty-five years, twenty years ago, David, you remember, we started this process, and the commissioners decided at that time that it wasn't necessarily what we needed in the county. We were dealing with the influx coming in the southern part of the county from wool. We was, at that time, fighting the division of farms to protect the ag industry, it was decided it wasn't needed. Twenty years ago, here we are again, having the same discussion. I don't think there's anybody in the county really and truthfully does not agree that there needs to be protection for everybody, for the ag producers, industry, homeowners, everybody. I'm hearing a lot of talk tonight, we're picking on the poultry industry kind of tonight because they're here, and that's okay, but I want the commission to take in mind ag as an industry, not just the poultry producers, you know, you're a hog producer, beef producers in here, dairyman in here, you got to protect everybody, even the grain farmers, you know, when you're talking about property lines for setbacks, though it's okay to put setbacks on agriculture, we don't have a problem setting back from that property line to get along with our neighbors. But when you've got houses moving in like we've had in the past, and put that right on the line, you know, middle of the night, you're out there running corn, you go flying past that house, that homeowner's not very happy. You know, I really think, I don't know if the reciprocal's the right thing to look at, but you know, there needs to be protection for everybody involved, the homeowner and the grain farmer, the cattlemen, everything, not just looking at, you can find feeding units and what this goes, I mean, you know, Mr. Whittington pointed out how much money these people Tyson brings into the county, and they're looking at a big expansion, it's going to be more money. From our end of the county, on that end, I know from being on the school board, you know, we dealt with that influx, we had two building projects because we was getting that influx of kids. Now, the last two years, we're going backwards as fast as we went forwards. Those houses that sit in there empty, they're not paying taxes. So, I really encourage the commission to take ag as an industry, because it is the number one industry in Washington County. And if you want more industry in Washington County, you've got to take care of the biggest one you got before anybody else wants to come in. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? It is past nine, and then, um, if nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business for the plant commission. I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
So, I'm, go.
I'll do it.
I'll make that one.
Flame fried burger, seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay here.